Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals, meeting of September 26, 2024, here at the Rose Baker Center. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely. There's a Zoom link for the meeting, which for the record is 873-7228-5894. I recognize in attendance myself, Joe Perisi, to my right, Michael Nyman, Ron Wilson, and on Zoom, James Gigliotti. And I declare we have a quorum. A couple of orders of business up front. We received a written request to continue the hearing on the petition of 360 Properties, Mass. at 143 Essex Avenue. The request for the continuance is because they were working with the neighborhood and have had to make some changes to the plans. And those drawings aren't ready. So I'll entertain a motion to continue that hearing to October 10.
Hello? Yep. Yeah, I'll move that we continue. Petition of 360 Properties, M A L L C, for 143 Essex Ave. To our next meeting, is that what you want to do? 10:10? I'd move approval of that.
Second that motion. Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Ms... Sorry. Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gigliotti?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Well, that is continued. One other order of business. We've put forth a procedural change for the zoning board of appeals procedures. It's an addition of the line, two lines to Article 4, Section 8. And it reads, "The board will vote on every decision that is ready at the regular meeting. This vote will approve the decision as written and give the chair or acting chair permission to sign the decision on behalf of the entire board." And I'll entertain a motion to add that piece to our procedures.
Yeah, I would make that motion to add that to our procedure, add that line that Joe just read.
Second. Made and seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Gigliotti?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mr. Canavaro. Mr. Perisi?
Yes. That's approved. Going forward, the decisions will amend, that will fix them as they come in. We'll only need to have one signature. It'll save Chase and everybody. We're going to call it the James Gigliotti Rule. Okay, on to our hearings. Application. The petitioner Susan Welch and David McCardle seeking a special permit under 1.9 to alter, expand, a pre-existing non-conforming structure; a special permit under 3.1.6 to exceed the maximum height for an accessory structure; and an ADU special permit 5.24.6 to convert a pre-existing non-conforming accessory structure into an ADU at 248 Atlantic Road.
I could write it down.
You've got to get it right in it or they won't hear you. Just to remind everyone, we need your name and address for the record up front.
Hey, my name is Bob Cahill. I live at 33 Hodgkins Street in Gloucester. And I'm representing Susan Welch and David McCardle, 248 Atlantic Road. Dave and Sue wish to turn an existing legal, non-conforming structure into an accessory dwelling unit. They would like to create a residence for future personal and/or property care managers. The original plan was to keep the foundation and frame of the existing structure intact and build upon it, as is mentioned in Kirk Benson's survey. I just caught that, that Kirk says on the survey that we're going to build on top of what's there, but we've changed that. Kirk did the survey early in the summer. After a foundation survey, I decided the best course of action is to, while maintaining the existing footprint, remove the structure, including the foundation, and build new in the exact spot. Assessor's records show this building has been in place since 1895, first built as a carriage house. So it well precedes zoning. It is a stone and gravel foundation, which is not adequate for the project planned. Although it is a legal, non-conforming structure, we may need relief because there is a change of use for the building. It has been used for overnight stays since my clients renovated it in 2002. But for the ADU variances for side yard and front yard and to allow the ADU to be in front of the principal building may be necessary to keep the structure on the original site. So if so, variance relief under Gloucester Zoning Ordinance 3.2.1 is necessary of a 12.7 feet for side yard, 21.3 feet for front yard, and a GZO footnote C to allow the accessory building to be in front of the principal building. In the application, I've cited the various points to prove it necessary. There are significant financial hardships as well as a hardship relating to unique site considerations, which are: the existing sewer system would have to be rewarped if the building were moved, as well as the water and electric service. Extensive removal of existing mature trees would have to be done. And the building cannot be moved to the rear of the house because of FEMA limitations. The entire principal building is in the buffer zone on this property. There is no negative effect on the neighborhood as the building has been tucked into this corner for more than a century with no issues. Two special permits and an ADU special permit are also necessary. First, to allow the ADU, the applicant satisfies all the requirements under GZO 5.24.5. The square footage does not exceed 900 square feet. Owners will continue to live on the property. Alterations of the existing building will be in keeping with the architectural integrity of the existing principal dwelling and the residential character of the neighborhood. Second, special permit 1.9 and 3.1.6 to allow an increase of the height for the accessory building from the existing 13 feet to 20 feet 8 inches, not to exceed 20 feet 8 inches. This moderate increase in height is consistent with the large, tall homes in this neighborhood. There will be no view impact. There will be no overshadowing of other properties as there are no residences in the immediate area of the proposed ADU. There will be no impairment of utilities or any other adverse impacts. The neighbors have all been, have all received copy of the plan and correspondence regarding this proposal. None have reached out to me to express opposition at this time. The following materials have been submitted for the board's review: a recent survey indicating the location of the existing building, which is the ADU's proposed location; architectural plans with elevations indicating the small increase in height; and a design that corresponds to the design of the large principal building; and an application with rationale for the requested relief. As the contractor, I am available for your questions. Sue, Dave, and I ask for your support of this ADU on the site of a pre-existing accessory building to assist Dave and Sue's wishes to have support, support personnel within this unit to help as they age, to increase available housing, and to maintain the existing design and look of the property. Thank you.
One thing, the special permit to alter and expand under 1.9 would also have to be subject to 2.4.5 because you want to tear it down? 2.4.5 is the demolition and replacement of a pre-existing, non-conforming structure.
I was not aware.
Yeah, if you're just going to alter and expand, then you turn around and tear it down, you're in trouble. You don't get that permit.
Especially with our recent history.
Okay, any other questions by the board at this time? All righty, thank you. We'll allow public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, you can please come forward. Or if you're on Zoom, you can hit your raise hand button on a device. Or if you're on a cell phone, you dial *9 and that'll raise your hand. Again, everyone that comes on first thing, name and address, and then say what you have to say. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Seeing none, there'll be no need for rebuttal. Discussion by the board.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. Special permit for height, 3.1.6. Special permit to alter and expand with tear-down demo reconstruction, 1.9 and 2.4.5. Special permit for the ADU, 5.24.6 due to the requirements that are not met. And the variance. And I think the variances are due to the change of use.
So the 5.24 is to convert to an ADU. And then the variances would be necessary because it's, I'm adding in front of the house, the one closer to the street than the primary. So I'm going to add that in the decision. And then 3.2.1 for side yard setback and frontage. Distance to the street, but there's also the fact that it's in front of the house. Add that variance also. I see three special permits. Three variances.
I'll try to make the motion, and you can add what I missed.
I think it's a good project, good use of the ADU regulations.
I do, too.
Go ahead.
Petition of Susan Welch, David McCardle, seeking special permit 1.9, and also, it's not written in here, but 2.4.5 for demo and reconstruction, to alter and expand a pre-existing, non-conforming structure; and a special permit 3.1.6 to exceed maximum height, the accessory structure, and an ADU special permit 5.24.6 to convert a pre-existing, non-conforming accessory structure into an ADU at 248 Atlantic Road. And we would also add in the variances for 1.7 and 3.2.1 for side yard setbacks, distance from the street. I would move approval for these three special permits, three variances. I think it's a good project. I think that the variances are primarily or exclusively because tearing down and reconstructing in the same plot close to the street. I think this is a good use of that structure for ADU. I think it's really in keeping with what the city is interested in happening. So I'd move approval for the three special permits and for the variances.
We have a motion?
Second.
Made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Nyman?
Yes, for the special permits and yes for the variances.
Mr. Gigliotti?
Yes, for all the relief requested.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes. You've heard our decision's favorable? Draft the decision and get it out.
All right, thank you very much.
Hey, our next hearing tonight is the petition of John Lawler and Alasetti Andre seeking a special permit under 1.9 to alter and expand a pre-existing, non-conforming structure; and variances under 1.7 and 3.2.1 for rear yard setback to construct an addition at 192 Eastern Ave. Yeah, so the discussion is, we think, the thought is that you only need a special permit to alter and expand. Because you're going over the deck footprint, it's already there, already in a non-conforming state, there's no need for a variance for rear yard. So go to it.
Okay, my name is John Lawler. I live at 192 Eastern Ave. And what I'm intending to do is to place the deck that's currently in the back of my yard and where the deck is not setback from the back in the adequate amount. So variance to the amount of feet needed.
So my understanding is that the addition that you're putting is exactly in the same footprint.
It's going to stay on the same footprint, yes.
It's not intruding any further in any direction? That's the question. That's why we don't believe you need a variance. The structure's already there. You're tearing it down. And I guess the reason he needs a special permit.
Pre-existing, non-conforming. Yeah, he's altering a pre-existing, non-conforming.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Are you going to build the replacement room up at the same level on pilings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application or online? Anyone in favor, please come forward. If you're online, you wish to speak. I do see some people on phones, so that would be *9. Anyone in favor? None? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? No opposition? They're all set. You can, we'll have a discussion by the board and a motion.
Petitioners of, petitioners John Lawler and Alasetti Andre seeking special permit 1.9, alter and expand a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. No variances are needed. I'd move approval of the special permit. I think it is increasing the non-conformity. It's not substantially more detrimental. I'd move approval of the special permit.
I would second the special permit.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded on the special permit for 192 Eastern Ave. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Gigliotti?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes. You've heard our decision's favorable. There is some time getting the decisions out and signed, and they'll notify you what to do. Thank you. Okay, as we voted earlier, 143 Essex Ave, it was continued to October. And our first, our next hearing is the petition of 125 Winger Sheek LLC seeking variances under 1.7 and 3.1.8 and 3.2.1 for lot area and lot area per dwelling unit to construct a single-family home at 105 Winger Sheek Road. Ernie Favazza.
Could I just be brought in as a panelist? I can present, please? Thank you. Sorry, host disabled. Participant screen sharing. One more step. It'll be in the meeting settings, maybe in the participant panel.
While we're waiting for that, I see a hand phone up on an iPhone. I'm not sure what that has to do with. If you're there, well, she can't pull you in. Bet, yeah, go ahead. Person on iPhone, you're muted. Is that Peter?
Sorry, I was having a hard time connecting.
Okay, for the record, we're joined by member Peter Canavaro for these next two hearings.
Mr. Chair, while we wait for this, just a procedural, would it make sense? You know, the first hearing is open. We'll go through it, ask for a continuance, and then just open vote. Like, I'll present for both within the first hearing and then instead of going over the exact same stuff twice. Does that make sense? Because 105, 107 require addition, like, same exact relief. So I'll just kind of speak to both, and you'll receive the testimony and then... Or alternatively, you can actually probably open the second hearing. You can say, "I'm opening the hearing for 105 and 107," and then...
Can I ask for a continuance?
Yeah, I know there's some neighbors who are here tonight, so I thought it would make sense, especially given that it's a light agenda. I'll go through the presentation tonight, continue for the housekeeping matter. And that way, if I get put on a busier agenda, I don't take up much time. That works? Okay, thank you. So for the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I am an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of 125 Winger Sheek LLC for the properties at 105 and 107 Winger Sheek Road. And so as a matter of housekeeping, as I stated, but I want to make sure we get this on the record. So both 105 and 107 have FEMA flood planes on site. This triggers the new GZO Section 5.5 flood plane overlay district. There's been a request from the building department to have the FEMA lines verified by city staff, specifically Chuck Shave, the conservation agent, prior to the ZBI concluding. Again, just for the record, not trying to be difficult, I want to make clear we object that the GZO gives that authority, but we're going to ask for continuance nevertheless because, you know, we're not building permit-ready otherwise. So coming back in two weeks is not the end of the world. But again, I just have to make sure we get the record established. So again, Section 5.5 is the flood plane overlay district that came into effect last year. Section 5.5.2 sets up the flood plane overlay district, which is comprised of two sub-districts. One is the federal flood plane district and one is the future flood risk district. The federal flood plane district is defined as being set by the FEMA flood insurance rate maps. So it's defined as to where those lines are. And that comes into play now because there are those maximums. You can't, first of all, you can't be in the VE zone with new structures, and you can't be exceeding more than 10% of the AE zone on site with new structures. The future flood risk district does not come into effect now. That'll be triggered when, if and when this project goes for a building permit. And at that point, you have to demonstrate as part of the application how you are addressing future flood risks with your proposed build. And then Section 5.5.5 designates something called a flood plane administrator and says that it's the conservation agent, but then gives them no job. The flood plane administrator has no authority, no jurisdiction, no task, no filing requirement. He's just named in there. So again, that is why we were saying, I don't think we need Chuck to weigh in on this. But again, let's get it done comprehensively. And so this is the FEMA flood plane we have on site. So you'll see that we've got, in the reddish color, that is the velocity zone. The purplish color is actually an AE zone, which is the rising water zone behind the velocity zone. And then the orange is another flood zone coming up from the Winger Sheek roadside. The structure in blue is the existing house. On the left-hand side, you see what would be 105. And on the right-hand side, you see 107 in green. And so you'll notice that on the left-hand side, that house is completely out of the flood plain. And then on the right-hand side, part of the deck is elevated over the flood plain, but it does not exceed any of the thresholds in the structure itself. They've both been purposely designed. As you may recall, we came here two years ago almost seeking the same relief for these houses, which were both C-word of where they are currently. After you gave the relief, we were in ConCon permitting. This ordinance came in. We had to scrap the ConCon permitting, push all these structures around to get them out, to get them to comply with this ordinance. And so again, it's not coincidence that they are where they are. They've been very intentionally located to make sure they comply with this ordinance. And that just shows the FEMA flood map also. Anyway, so moving on. We are in the R20 district. That's the low, medium-density residential district. My client acquired the property in 2021 and previously received this relief. As you will recall, that the relief being sought is about lot area and lot area per dwelling unit. And that is based on the technicality as to how those terms are defined in the GZO. At the end of the day, the proposing two modest, dimensionally compliant, single-family structures, one on each lot. But again, we have this table here. And so although if you were out there, there's physically over 45,000 square feet of physical lot area, being that, you know, I am not as lot area as defined in the GZO, but just in reality, these lots are 45,000 square feet each in the R20. However, the GZO says that for these kind of, for new lots, you can't count more than 25% of your required lot area can't come from wetland. Well, we're out in Winger Sheek, so technically, the whole area out there is resource area. So even though we're high and dry, we're out of the flood plain, you know, we are technically in, you know, dune sand. And so that triggers that 25% threshold. So of the 45,000 square feet, we get to count 5,000 square feet, which means we are 15,000 square feet short of countable lot area. And then on the lot area per dwelling unit, where you need 10,000 per unit, we have, again, the same 5,000, which means we're 5,000 short there. So that's why we have requests for relief for 15,000 on lot area and 5,000 for lot area per dwelling unit. Again, not because it's out there, just because it's made of the stuff that the GZO wasn't anticipating it being made out of. Again, these are just the site plans. I have a full building set, but these have not changed. These have just been moved. Some elevations have changed, like physical elevations off the ground to make sure that the dunes are being accommodated. the dunes are being accommodated, but again, we're not violating the 30 feet above average grade limitation. And the last thing I will just say about these, the dune work that was done and this flood zone situation that we're in, because we are permitting this with the Conservation Commission, we have gone, and you have a site plan that's been submitted to you also, signed by John Judd of Gateway Consultants, he's a licensed engineer. There was real topographical survey work done. Then we hired Epsilon Associates and another company called Sanborn Head, which are coastal geologists and environmental firms, and they went out and used LiDAR to actually get precise dune topography. This has been reviewed by CZM, and so this has been, this has been a lot of people looking at where these dunes are and where this velocity zone line is. So I'm fairly confident that we'll come back at the next meeting with a, yes, that's where the line is. And it's not, again, out of pure luck, there's a ton of work and resources that went into making sure that these lines are accurately mapped and that we've correctly placed the structures to not exceed or, you know, hit the limits set by the new flood plane ordinance. That's the existing structure that we're looking to replace. It's still out there, it's tired, it's got to go, and again, the new one's going to be a lot further back from the primary dune than what that one, where that one is situated. So to the standards to be applied, again, we have to find the literal enforcement, we create a hardship. Again, strict enforcement of the definition of lot area says, yeah, sorry, you have more than twice the required lot area, but it doesn't count, so you have a non-buildable lot. That hardship relates directly to the soil, it's literally because the soil is made of the wrong kind of dirt, it's dune sand, not soil, so therefore we are in a wetland. And granted, the relief needs to be found to not harm the public good or nullify the intent of the GZO. Again, this will allow two single-family homes, one in each lot, on what are pragmatically double oversized lots. They'll be consistent with the neighborhood that's out there, the single-family structures that are out there on other lots. And again, we are constructing these outside of the flood zones. Again, there's the one deck on the right-hand house that'll hang over the AE zone, but everything's up and out, and also up and out of the dunes, so that both animal and sand migration can happen underneath these structures. So again, we're requesting two variances per site, one for lot area relief, which would be 15,000 square feet, one for lot area per dwelling unit, which would be 5,000 square feet of lot area relief. I will not ask you for a vote tonight, I will ask you for a continuance that we can check that last box and make sure that Mr. Shade agrees that the FEMA lines as shown are correct. And if I can come back in your next meeting, I'd like to wrap it up there.
Is the little garage, that's on 107, right?
Yeah, it's being demolished.
All right, so we're going to take some public testimony, and I'll leave it open. If anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please raise your hand, anyone Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Being none, won't close the public hearing, but I will entertain a motion to continue to October 10.
Do you want to do them separately?
I have to.
Petition 125 Winger Sheek LLC seeking the variances as listed for lot area, lot area per dwelling unit, to construct single-family home at 105 Winger Sheek Road. I would move approval of a continuance to our October 10 meeting.
Seconded.
Aiden seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilotti?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
That's continued. I will now open a public hearing on the petition of 125 Winger Sheek LLC seeking a variance 1.7, 3.1.8, and 3.2.1 for lot area and lot area per dwelling unit requirements to construct a single-family home at 107 Winger Sheek Road. Hearing is open, we've heard the married presentation, unless you wanted to add anything.
I'd just say, for the record, Joel Favazza, Seaside Legal, 123 Main Street, I'd like to repeat and incorporate here and by reference the presentation I made on the prior hearing.
Thank you. Public testimony, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please raise your hand. Being none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Being none, we'll keep the public hearing open, but I will entertain a motion to continue 107 Winger Sheek to October 10.
So I would make that motion to continue for 125 Winger Sheek LLC for the 107 Winger Sheek Road. I would move that we continue that to October 10.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, roll call vote.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilotti?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
So we continue both.
Thank you.
Just to remind everybody, we also have the continued Taylor Street to 1010, I'm not sure where that's going, and the one we continue today, so. And the new hearings, we'll have probably six or seven on the 10th of October. Yeah, we're going to get some of that out of the way. Anything else anyone have to sign the decisions, and don't forget your packets? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Aiden seconded, roll call.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Gilotti?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, we are adjourned.